Speak, the procedures are detailed on agendas available at the back of the room. The meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. So I will start with an introduction of board members and staff, starting from my right.
Louis Pickus, second ward.
Lloyd Culbertson, fourth ward.
Bob Frankson, first ward.
Jay Kennedy, fourth ward.
Rich Plonsker, second ward.
Kevin Lewis, third ward.
And with us from staff this evening Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development. The first item on our agenda isn't even actually on the agenda, and this is a tough one. Since our last meeting in October, our good friend and colleague who sat to my right, Richard Kristoff unexpectedly passed away on November 29th while on a vacation in California with his family. Richard was appointed to the ZBA in May of 2011. He served as a member of the Architectural Review Committee for North Carroll Meadows. In his professional life, he was an attorney with the law offices of Sanford-Kahn. He was an experienced real estate litigator, graduate of the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, graduated from the University of Chicago School of Law. He was an accomplished pianist, gourmet cook, survived by his Mary, or his wife Mary and three children, Matthew, Anna, and Aaron. So those are the things, I guess, that we say at a time like this to kind of summarize somebody's life that does it absolutely no justice. What I would say is that for the time that I worked with Richard, I knew him as a very sincere man, an individual that was obviously a professional man but unassuming, served on this board very, very well. I enjoyed being, working alongside him, and I've worked along with a lot of different types of people, and he was just a very comfortable and a true gentleman. So I'm going to miss him. If you all have any comments before we start the meeting?
Well, I would add, try to add to that. I think Rich Kristoff was a very good man. He was a colleague, a neighbor, a friend of mine. I served with him not only on this board but on the Architectural Review Committee and our Homeowners Association. I always admired his level-headed approach to the issues. He was balanced, he was fair, he had a quick grasp of the issues. He had a sincere desire to achieve a positive and equitable outcome in all matters. As a friend, I'll miss his company, I'll miss his love of music and the arts. He was cracking good company, really enjoyed going out with him and Mary. And I'll never forget his smile. It was always very welcoming and always cheerful. I think we're all better off having had Rich Kristoff in our midst.
I'm sure of that, and he was very good-natured about us giving him a hard time about his Tesla. Any other comments? All right. Moving on to our first agenda item would be approval of the October 27th ZBA meeting minutes. I believe you all have them. Any comments to those minutes?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is a continued consideration of a request for approval of a front yard and side yard setback variances for additions to the residence located at 995 Woodbine Place. Owner and representative is Mary Ann Wells. Any declaration of conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? Anybody intending to testify in this matter? If you just stand, raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Yeah, that's fine. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. Move on to presentation by the petitioner. Mary Ann Wells?
Good evening. My name is Amy Wells, and I'm the resident. Mary Ann Wells has requested that I attend in her absence.
Good.
And this is Richard Popowski, he's the designer for what we've been doing.
Yeah.
So what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is what you've asked us to consider for the front of the house. I've lived in the house for almost seven years and have grown to love being in an old farmhouse, so much that we did a lot of research about not only the property but just the history when we started this whole design process almost two years ago, Richard. So I learned a lot about zoning and what we can and can't do, and we've very thoughtfully designed this. What we are asking for variance on is the front porch. It is two feet, an additional two feet into the area. It is an open, it's not a closed porch, it's open. It is a necessity today unloading two children in rain with some groceries and school bags. It's nice having a landing spot. When we presented to the historic review, it was their assessment that not having a porch would not be, I guess, design or street view appealing. So I'm here to ask that we receive this variance, that it is, after removing the front, at the front here, there was a bay window, so we have taken that bay window off. And then the two feet here is where we're asking for approval. I'm sorry, I don't have a rich vocabulary in design or architecture, so I'm here representing as best as I can.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't we move on to staff's report? Ms. Cerniak?
Thank you, Chairman Frankson. This matter was before you at your last meeting, and it does include three parts. Ms. Wells focused on the piece, the front porch, that was the subject of most of your discussion, but just to review, this street is very unique, Woodbine Place. Woodbine Place actually used to be a service road, and this structure and the other structures clustered around the edge of the street used to be outbuildings for an estate. A subdivision occurred allowing the various outbuildings to be adaptively reused as residences, but as a result of the original layout of the estate, the buildings are not in conformance with today's setbacks. The renovation of this house includes several pieces, and three of those pieces require variances. First, at the rear of the house on the east side, a later addition will be removed and a new addition will be constructed, even though that new addition will be behind the house, about 13 feet of the addition will be in the front yard setback. So it's behind the house but in the front yard setback, so a very unusual condition. At the last meeting, the board, my sense of the board is that there was generally an understanding and support for that variance. On the south side of the house, there is currently a single-story flat-roofed element, which again was a later addition to the original farmhouse. That roof currently leaks from time to time, or all the time, I'm not sure, but the proposal is to replace that flat roof with a gable roof. The footprint of that element is not changing, but because the mass of the roof will change, will have a little bit greater height, a variance is needed to recognize that change in form. That one-story addition is entirely in the front yard setback, but if you extended the side yard setback line, it's also in the side yard. So technically, it requires both a front yard and a side yard variance to recognize the change on the roof of that one-story element. Again, the one-story element isn't growing in size. And then the third piece is there's a proposal to put an open covered porch on the house. When we came before you with this petition at the last meeting, there weren't clear details on the porch and the extent of the further encroachment. We now know that the, to the furthest extent of the eve of the covered front porch, it is two feet further than the furthest extent of the eve on the main house, on the original house. So it's a two-foot additional encroachment. Again, that is an open front porch, it really is for functionality, and a trade-off that the Historic Preservation Commission saw, which I don't think we articulated before the zoning board at the last meeting, is that the bay window just to the north of the front porch is actually being removed, and the front facade will be flat. So there's a bit of a trade-off there. The Historic Preservation Commission did, since your last meeting, review and approve this project. They talked quite a bit about the porch. They felt that the porch element actually helped to reduce the appearance of mass of the front of the house. So they did encourage that the porch not be downsized because with this house growing larger, it's important to have an appropriately proportioned and sized front porch. So the fact that the bay window is being removed, the porch actually is an open element, both of those serve to mitigate the additional two feet of encroachment. I do also, I meant to leave at your places, but I will pass out an air photo. The zoning board recognized at your last meeting that the house to the north actually encroaches further into the front yard setback and actually is on or over the property line. So as you look at the streetscape, this further encroachment really is not the most dominant portion of the streetscape, it really is that existing structure to the north. Staff does recommend approval, you do have findings in the staff report as well as some recommended conditions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Because some of us were not here last time, so go ahead.
I have a question, and you might have covered it last time, but I'm just curious about any drainage sorts of issues that would, that are present now that need to be rectified because of the close distance on both sides of the world, on both sides of, houses on both sides of the world, whether you thought about that, I'm sure you did.
To date, no one's raised concerns about drainage, but certainly, this is a project that will require civil plans to be submitted to the city, and those will be reviewed along with the request for a building permit. So City Engineer will evaluate the site and the surrounding conditions. I failed to mention, you did, we did receive testimony from a neighboring property owner across the street to the west in support of the project, and a property owner to the east in support of the project requesting some landscaping. Some of that landscaping is already in place, and as we work through the project, if there are gaps that need to be filled in, we'll work with the property owner to do that.
Just curious, the bay window, how far did that extend out?
I believe it extended out about 18 inches to 24 inches. Perhaps the architect knows exactly?
It's about 24 inches, but it's not really specified, not even on our platoon survey, but it's about 24 inches.
Chairman, I have a question regarding the front porch, the roof line, if you look on 9.1, that the new porch seems to drain straight into the side of the building. Has the building department reviewed this to make sure that that's going to function? Or perhaps, petitioner can answer that?
Yes, we're going to put saddle over there, so the water is going to be drained towards the front where there's going to be garters. Right here, this part, going to receive the garters, and all the water from that part of the roof and the saddle, not paying into that garter and down to the outside.
Thank you.
And I can add, prior to the issuance of a building permit, detailed plans, construction plans will need to be submitted and will be reviewed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to public testimony. Anybody wishing to give testimony on this matter? All right, no cross-examination, any final questions from the board? So why don't we go on to board discussion and comment? I think in our last meeting, staff laid out really the three issues very well, but what we were hung up on, I think, in the last meeting was this front covered porch area, and the reason that the petitioner was asking or suggesting that it really needed to be extended another two feet from the current, I guess, 13 feet to 11 feet from the setback, when the setback is 50 feet, right? It's a unique neighborhood. I drove by this weekend, and there were some comments about this last time about a bit of a safety issue with the cars and no garage, and for whatever reason, I drove by, there were two cars parked in that little circular drive that were halfway in the street. All of a sudden, I got real comfortable with it real quick, just my opinion of trade-off of having a garage in exchange for a couple of feet of port-cocher or covered area, so those are my thoughts, but what are the rest of the boards?
I know, last time there was a discussion about that two feet on the front porch, and it doesn't have to go up that far and everything, but if you look at the house as it exists today, if you're going to put the front porch on, you almost have to push it up a couple more feet, and it improves the appearance of the house, so it seems reasonable to me.
No, I think that one of the issues was the HPA, Historic Review of this, and it sounds like that that's been structurally accomplished, so I'm comfortable with where we are, where staff has been taking.
We don't want to defer to the HPC, but I mean, the fact that they've endorsed it, yeah.
What's going to be the total square footage of the house now, once it's expanded? And what is it now?
The total square footage, including the garage, is 4,200. And the existing, and the existing is slightly below 1,500.
Oh, wow. So almost three times as large.
But that's including the garage, right now there is no garage at all.
Thank you. I don't know if we covered this last time, is this within bulk?
Yes, the Historic Preservation Commission approved the design, and it was consistent with the allowable square footage.
So any other, and in our last meeting, we asked for more definition to this front porch, and I think we kind of got it tonight. Any other questions or comments? So I don't know if that suggests which way we're leaning. I know, I kind of, I got comfortable with it.
I think this is a great improvement.
It's a unique neighborhood.
Endorse the project.
Yeah, yeah. Well, with that, we could entertain a motion. Somebody would like to entertain a motion?
I would move to approve the request as submitted based on the findings as stated in this report and as endorsed by staff and as discussed tonight.
And we would make a recommendation along with the elements of approval that are outlined in staff's report? Would that be your motion?
It would.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations and good luck with the project.
Thank you, I do appreciate your time and all of your consideration.
And thank you for the definition.
Can't wait to see it.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of a request for approval of a side yard setback variance for a second-story addition to the residence located at 507 Lexington Drive. Owners are Todd and Christine Puch, representative, John Rickert, architect. Anybody, or any declaration of conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, if being none? Anybody intending to testify in this one? Stand, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. Presentation by the petitioner, Mr. Rickert?
All right, I'm going to try to use much less than my 10 minutes. I think probably the first thing I'll do is just kind of read through the standards and criteria. So the first standard is the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locale. The proposed additions and alterations to this particular property don't extend beyond the existing extents of the home's footprint, and the overall width of the house is not being extended. The overall depth of the house is also not being extended, and there are no proposed changes to the front elevation of the house. So really, the character of the house is not being changed in any way, and we have tried to be careful to upgrade the functionality of the home while respecting the existing character of the neighborhood and the existing character of the house. So we basically, we've chosen to maintain the look of the home and feel that it's in keeping with the existing homes in the area and the home itself, so any changes that we're proposing are of the same level of detail as the existing house, and the essential character of both the house and the neighborhood should stay the same. Second criteria is that the conditions upon which the partition for variation are based are unique to the property for which the variation is sought and are not applicable generally to other property with the same zoning classification. And the answer to that is that the entire neighborhood is a unique non-conformity in that its zoning classification doesn't fit any of the lots that exist in the neighborhood. The current zoning requires 50-foot side yard setbacks, and the lots generally in this neighborhood are 100 feet wide, so it's definitely a unique situation there. The third criteria is that the alleged difficulty or hardship in conforming with the requirements of this chapter is caused by this chapter and has not been created by any persons presently or formerly having an interest in the property. Again, I think that's pretty readily apparent, that given our five setbacks, the property would be completely unbuildable. And D, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. So again, we kind of go back to the fact that we're only adding 134 square feet to the property. It's on the backside of the house over existing space, so there should be no effect on any of those concerns. I don't think anything exceptional to the neighborhood is being requested. The proposed improvements have no effect but to improve the values of the neighboring properties through the proposed improvements, and no negative impacts are foreseeable. And I will just run through the drawings. So here's the site plan, and you can see the existing house, and there's an existing deck. The space that we're adding is just this little square, which is over an existing little sunroom space on the first floor. It's the existing basement, no change to that, existing first floor, no changes to that. So here's the existing second floor. So here's the current master suite, a very small bathroom to the front, a pretty minimal closet, and the bedroom. And the changes that we're proposing, add a little laundry space on the second floor, expand the bathroom and the closet, and then the master bedroom pushes out over that sunroom space on the first floor by the 134 square feet. That's the extent of the change to the roof. Again, this being the front of the house, nothing, you know, nothing to the front of the house is changing. This is the existing side of the house, the south side, and then we have the proposed south side. We worked very hard to maintain some symmetry for the south elevation on the part that might be visible from the street. And then this is really the space that's being added is out here. Existing rear of the house and proposed rear of the house. So again, here's our addition. Section, and then just some pictures of the neighborhood. So this is the subject property. Again, this is what it looks like now and what it's going to look like in the future. Here's the back of the house, so our proposed addition is here on the second floor. The garage side won't change. And again, here, this elevation that you will see from the street, to some degree, again, that's the area we worked kind of hard to try to maintain some symmetry on the upper floor with the windows. Some neighboring properties, I'm sure you guys probably all did a little tour of the neighborhood, but it's a very consistent, family-oriented neighborhood, you know, and our existing home is right in keeping with what's around the neighborhood, and I think our addition is as well. So I'm going to leave it at that and let you guys do your thing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to staff's report, Ms. Cerniak.
Not much to add to the details of the project, just an explanation. I think every time the board sees a variance in this neighborhood, it's a bit confusing because the zoning is so incongruous with the development that occurred. To this day, I can't really explain how the subdivision was approved with the zoning so out of whack, but this request is simply an infill of a rear corner of the house. It is very consistent with other types of improvements that have occurred in this neighborhood. The extent of the encroachment is not being increased at all, there will still be a 10-foot The question that often comes up when we The question that, that often comes up when we see variances in this neighborhood is why not simply rezone the area? We have discussed that from time to time. Have, have talked with, with some of the residents over the years. The problem is that by, by reconfiguring the zoning today, theoretically, someone could buy multiple properties and, and resubdivide and perhaps increase the density. So at this point, because there are different sized lots in that area, it presents a little bit of a challenge. So I think we'll continue to look at that in the years going forward. But for now, this is a, certainly a reasonable variance request. It does meet all the standards. Staff does recommend approval. There are findings in support of the recommendation in the staff report. I did wanna mention one thing. There is mention of a tree, and I forget the species, but it is located near the corner of the house where the addition will be constructed. We did recommend inch range replacement. I did talk further with the city arborist. As we often do, we wanna look more carefully at the condition of the tree. It may not be appropriate to require full inch range replacement given the condition. So I, I would suggest that we just soften that condition a little bit at the discretion of the city arborist and we'll work with the petitioner on exactly what the equitable solution is to removing that tree. It, it does appear to be somewhat of a safety issue.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Actually, on that same topic you were just talking about, is that, is that, that twenty-five inch honey locust is, I think, is what the tree we're talking about? Are we suggesting, is, is that part of the scope of what we need to be opining on today? Or is that just something that you're trying to, you're adding that, that staff is looking at?
I think we wanted to make you aware, we often try and save trees. In this case, after looking at that tree, it really is not in anyone's best interest to try and save it. So we certainly wanna make you aware that the tree will likely come down. Anytime a tree comes down, whether the board sees it or not, we do, are guided by the tree preservation ordinance, which does allow us to, for instance, if someone removes an ash tree today, we don't require inch range replacement. If, if trees are dead or in hazardous condition, we might not. So it, it isn't something you need to weigh in on. I do think that the staff report probably writes that condition a little strongly, so I would just suggest that if you choose to move forward with this, you give us a little latitude to soften that and give us some discretion on that point.
So are you suggesting that we could back off of the inch by inch and just something, you know, according to staff's discretion?
As determined to be appropriate by the city's arborist would be fine.
Any other questions? Alright. Any public testimony on this matter? No cross-examination, no final questions, I assume? We'll head right into board discussion. To me, it looks like, I mean, the line of the house is not changing. It's a non-conforming neighborhood. I don't wanna simplify it.
No, I would only add that I noticed, driving the street, that I think the house to the south has a very similar sort of addition that was put on it at some point, 'cause the frame of the, I don't know if you noticed that, but it seems like it fits right into what's been done around it and no big surprises in that it'll be fine.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty straightforward request.
Alright. Any other comment, any other discussion? Not at all. Kind of a no-brainer to me, I can support it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but if...
Agreed.
Alright. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the city council to approve the variance to allow the second floor addition, not to encroach further in the current home and subject to the city arborist's final decision regarding the tree on the property.
So we'd soften that language, okay?
I'll second that.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alls opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of a request for approval of a steep slope setback variance to allow the reconstruction of historic building wings that were previously moved from the residence located at 999 Lake Road. Owners are Ronald and Karina Greaks. Representative is Ray Basso, architect. Any declaration of conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts? Anybody intending to testify on this one? Do you stand, raise your right hand? Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. We will start with the presentation by the petitioner.
Good evening, I'm Ray Basso and this is Ryan Garrick, the homeowner. Ryan would like to introduce you to the project from his point of view as a homeowner.
Do we wanna give him a mic? Or is it, or do we need one? Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
My wife Karina and I have been living in Lake Forest for about fourteen years. We bought the 999 house about ten years ago. We've absolutely fallen in love with this house. We're both engineers and the trick in restoring this house over the last ten years, which we've painstakingly have done, has included things like sourcing a hundred and eighteen antique lights that had been removed over the years from the house. The number of nights I spent up on eBay trying to find a house, a light that would be consistent with this house. Every doorknob, every window was restored in the house. We restored the original hundred-year windows as opposed to replacing them, just for the architectural context and from the history perspective. Our four kids live in the house with us. As beautiful as the house is, it really has three kind of really big drawbacks that we'd like to be able to fix. Number one, it has no master bedroom. Number two, it has no living room. And number three, a nineteen forties garage was tacked onto the left side of the house, which is quite an eyesore for anybody that drives up and down Lake Road, including our neighbors. So what we'd like to be able to do is put the house back to the way it was originally designed in nineteen thirteen and add the garage to be more consistent with the design of the house and actually be something that the neighbors look at and find more, more pleasing than is today.
We have images from the original nineteen twelve plans, as you see, as well as photos and current plans. I'll go over the entire project briefly before focusing on the zoning issues that bring us here tonight. We first met with city staff on site for this project in two thousand and four when the Garricks purchased the property. It's a significant property because this residence was designed in nineteen twelve by Howard Van Doren Shaw when David Adler actually worked in his office. That was a rare period in time and arguably, some of Shaw's best work was performed at that time. David Adler's influence is seen in many of the details of this residence. As originally built, the residence stands out as one of the most balanced examples of Shaw's massing and his enduring elegance and design. Shaw lived at Ragdale and his hand is woven through the fabric of our daily lives in Lake Forest from Market Square to the many local residences he designed. After a nineteen forty fire, significant changes were made to this historic residence. Exterior changes destroyed the harmonious massing of subordinate elements. The south and east wings were removed. The living room and master bedroom were eliminated and a flat roof garage was replacing the, put at the north and replacing the original porch. We'll continue to recycle and use lumber made from trees harvested on site. We've got historic photos of the exterior showing what we intend to replicate on the south side. This is the west elevation facing Lake Road. From the southeast, looking at the house, you can see where the relocated sun porch sits now as part of the nineteen forties demolition and removal of this east wing and the south wing. We intend to restore it as this view shows. Originally, that sat here with the second floor above. The east wing sat here. From the interior courtyard, looking at the south, we meant, we intend to restore it to the original location of that sun porch and the original south wing. Our new plans, we plan to use the existing lumber, as I said, to construct things in the house from millwork, casing and trim to details like we've already done, kids' lockers and kids' bookcases. Our plans call for an architectural hyphen here to separate our proposed new garage from the existing historic residence. The dimensions of our garage are generated by the pilasters on this existing north wing. The breezeway will connect the new garage and the overhead doors on the new garage will be facing north to the side yard instead of to Lake Road as the current overhead doors face. We'll be reducing the paved surfaces significantly with a new service drive framed by an alleia of oak trees with a vista straight through to the lake. The north half of the alleia of oak trees is already in place. It's been there for several years. As you can see here. Now specifically for our zoning issue, subsequent to the nineteen forties damage to the Shaw design, the City of Lake Forest acted to protect all public and private property from damage due to the erosion of Lake Michigan bluffs. The steep slope protections passed by the city are broad in scope and provide a process to address individual properties upon which no damage or destruction from natural erosion is expected. It's our intent to demonstrate that the ZBA should grant the variance to the general steep slope protections at our specific site as provided for when those City of Lake Forest protections were enacted. The specific impact of the Lake Forest steep slope regulations are that currently portions of the existing east wing sit within the projected twenty-two degree line which the city uses to define the bluff. Only that east wing will be in a defined bluff area upon completion of the proposed work. And by excavating for the new east wing, replicating the original part of the building that was there, we intend to go down below the projected twenty-two degree line, which will therefore make that east wing less non-conforming than the existing east wing. In addition, the act of excavating the existing soil in that area will lessen the load on the bluff by reducing soil weight. The new garage proposed to the north and the replication of the south wing are not within the defined bluff area. Those areas are, however, within the seventy-five foot setback line as is the entire existing residence. Specifically regarding steep slopes, Lake Forest Code provides that A, construction in the setback could be recommended if there exists adequate toe of the slope improvements. A toe of the bluff stone revetment design was generated in two thousand and thirteen. We were granted a building permit and the toe of the slope improvement was installed and granted final approval in two thousand and fourteen. B, construction in the twenty-two degree slope angle could be recommended if there exists adequate slope or other improvements that effectively increase the stable slope angle. A historic concrete retaining wall running north and south exists, which does indeed increase slope stability. You can see here the existing concrete retaining wall and the east wing that we're talking about above it. The concrete retaining wall runs virtually the entire length of the property north and south. One of the keys to soil erosion and recognizing soil erosion on a site like this is whether or not the trees are plumb and vertical. And you can see here that over the last hundred years, these trees that have grown are all plumb and vertical. The soil's not moving. There aren't trees at all odd angles and tipping over. In addition to the concrete retaining wall, there are existing steel groins at the beach running both north and south and east and west. And there's an existing stone revetment north of our new stone revetment at the corner of the property. This steel groin is on the property, north of this property that we're discussing by fifteen feet. It's just beyond the property line. Under section C, variation could be recommended if the entire slope shows no indication of instability. Per the engineer's report, we have a bluff setting that has been stable for more than a hundred years. Our engineers point out that the city beach project at Forest Park, constructed in the nineteen eighties, has significantly improved the stability of the beach and the bluff at this property. The general littoral flow of sand in Lake Michigan is north to south along this west shore. So you can see in the distance, the city project at Forest Park Beach projects further than the neighbors to the south steel groin or our steel groin on this site. What that does is act as a trap that catches the sand moving from north to south, filling in this area with sand, sandbars and protecting the bluff. You see here the two thousand and fourteen stone revetment. In addition, the city project at Forest Park basically stops any wave action from this point west. So it attenuates the waves that are coming from the south and especially from the southwest. Variation from any restriction could be recommended if the requested construction is less non-conforming than the existing residence and the ravine or bluff does not show any indication of instability. Or if the applicant submits evidence based on current geotechnical engineering practices, which result in the determination that the particular slope is stable at an angle greater than twenty-two degrees. We actually satisfy all three of these criteria listed for variation from any restriction. As you know, the provision of the Lake Forest Code allows for these types of variances on a site-specific location. That makes sense because the ordinances were drafted without any geotechnical background. There weren't soil borings done. That was left to the individual instance where this situation could come up. Only by onsite soil testing can site-specific design requirements be established. There are four criterion that must be met by the city code for approval of a zoning variance. We met all four per our statement of intent in your handouts and as shown by Kathy in your staff report. This is a view of the two thousand and fourteen stone revetment. The bluff, once again, with the trees remaining vertical and plumb and the discussed east wing of the residence. We ask that you please consider our engineers conclusions that the house has been stable since its original construction in nineteen twelve. As such, the planned foundation improvements provide a significant improvement to a structure which has been stable. The stability of the house will be significantly upgraded. The structural refinements will also improve the overall stability of the bluff. The replications and restorations proposed will return one of our community's historic treasures to its original balanced and enduring elegance as designed and built in nineteen thirteen under the hand of Howard Van Doren Shaw. Even from this angle, which is out over the water looking west, you can see that the house is completely imbalanced. This is where the south wing originally sat and you can actually see a little depression in the turf where the foundation is still there. This greenhouse was originally at the east wing as shown in the previous slides. With that, I'd like to now introduce our engineer, Bill Weaver, who is here to answer any questions you might have regarding engineering aspects of the project. Bill's one of the few coastal engineers working on the Great Lakes. He's employed by AECOM, which is the world's number one engineering firm for several years running with over forty-five thousand employees currently working on projects in over a hundred and fifty countries. Bill? Once again, Bill's primarily here to answer questions, so we could probably move to the next item on the agenda. so we could probably move to the next item on the agenda.
Okay. All right, then why don't we move on to staff's report? Kathy, Kathy, if you could, in simpleton terms at the end of your report, just help us understand what the ask here is for the ZBA.
Maybe I'll start with that.
Yeah.
The board doesn't very often see requests for steep slope setbacks, although I do think you may have one on your next agenda as well. Occasionally, the board sees these types of requests. This is a situation where the project is in full conformance with all the zoning setbacks. The front yard setback, the rear yard setback, the side yard setbacks. The steep slope setback applies to construction along the bluff and along ravines. And as Mr. Bassel said, the steep slope setback was put in place by the city to protect those unique natural features. You can drive around town and you see many places where homes were built prior to the steep slope setback and they are located very close to the edge of the ravine or a bluff. We have a couple situations where you actually have a house in a ravine. We now understand that those, in particular ravines, are important to the city's drainage system. But the basic purpose of the steep slope setback is to set a high bar for any construction that occurs within, in the case of a bluff, within 75 feet of the edge of the bluff. The edge of the bluff, the top of the bluff, is determined as defined in the code by extending a 22-degree line from the base of the bluff. The point at which that 22-degree line intersects the table land is where that 75 feet is measured from. On the plans in your packet, I actually highlighted the steep slope setback line on the site plan. So in this case, you do see that the entire house is located within the steep slope setback. The city engineer has worked on this project probably for at least two years. Been working closely with the property owners, consulting engineers and architects. They have met several times onsite, several times in the office, and talked about what needed to be demonstrated in order for the city engineer to be able to recommend approval. The city engineer doesn't on his own have the ability to grant a variance. That's why we are before this body. Because this is a variance from a provision in the zoning code, the steep slope setback, and it does require approval of an ordinance ultimately by the city council. So unlike zoning variances, this is coming to you after extensive review at the staff level. In this case, not only were studies done to demonstrate the stability of the pre-existing conditions, but the owners also chose to do additional work that extended over probably about a nine-to-12-month period and establish that additional stone revetment at the base of the bluff. The city engineer, after that work was completed, after documentation of that work was submitted, did do another review. And at that point, he recommended, forwarded a recommendation to this body that all the criteria have been met, that he looks at, and you do have before you a recommendation for approval. Certainly as this goes forward, similar to the earlier petition, we don't have plans in, we don't have final building plans in for permit, but certain conditions need to be met as those plans are developed. And one of those is that the foundations will need to extend beyond that 22-degree line to give the addition greater stability than even it has right now. So does that help explain your role?
It does for me.
Okay. It is because at the staff level, we don't have the ability to grant this variance, but the code is written to allow for variances when this type of work, as has been done in this petition, has been completed. So you do have findings and support and conditions should you choose to move forward with this.
All righty. We'll move on to questions by the board.
I have a few. In the staff report, Kathy, it says the original foundations still exist on the property. I guess I'd ask you and the petitioner, do you intend to use the original foundations? Replace them?
No, we actually intend to replace them and build stronger. And as you can see on this cross-section, this is Bill's cross-section, actually, the engineering design. But the new foundation, as Kathy said, will go below this projected 22-degree line. This is what the revetment that you saw at the toe of the bluff that we built in 2014, projecting that line up. All this existing soil is there. This is the concrete retaining wall you saw. But we're going to lower the new foundation so that it's below the intersection of that 22-degree line and our east wing.
But the new foundation will be in the same footprint as the original?
Right. The exterior dimensions will be the same. It'll be deeper.
It'll be deeper.
And it'll be new concrete.
All right. I'm going to ask for a little help in understanding some of these recommendations because I'm not sure I do. In addition to the foundation, it says the new construction must be underpinned so that the foundation extends below the... So that's what you were talking about, below the 22?
Right.
Degree line. Tie-backs shall be provided laterally for the existing concrete retaining walls? Could you clarify?
Yeah, that's addressing this concrete retaining wall that exists and is historic on the site. As you saw from those trees, none of the soil has moved. The trees are all still vertical. But the existing retaining wall is important because it holds the soil in place, which is above the 22-degree line that you used to define the bluff. So actually, all this soil you might consider superfluous, but it's important that it's there. That's why this existing concrete retaining wall will be reinforced and tied back laterally.
What does that mean, tied back laterally?
Bill's the best person to answer that.
Yeah, the existing wall has a good foundation as it stands. It's been there 100 years or so. But it's getting old. So we're, to make sure we have a belt and suspender situation, we're going to essentially create a structure landward of it below ground and then tie the two walls together. So now you have two different masses of structure holding the slope in place. So it's like a, the structure will be like a fabric tied together.
This has been vetted with the city engineer?
Is there a basement in the house?
I'm not quite...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind. Sorry, thank you. And then finally, the gap between the steel sheet pile wall and concrete retaining wall shall be bridged and the catch basin repaired. Could you again elucidate?
We don't actually have a picture of that area, but the steel retaining wall that they're talking about comes from the property to the south, onto our property and intersects with the concrete retaining wall that you saw. So at that intersection, there's a pre-existing manhole for catching stormwater runoff. That's the area that we want to rebuild and tie the two together.
Is that in conjunction with the adjacent property owner? Or is this solely on your property?
It's solely on our property, but it does continue south and provide a similar retaining wall for him. But this work is all described and it will be on our property and it'll be engineered once again by Bill Weaver and AECOM.
How would this affect the steep slope issue? If nothing was done? And just trying to understand why this is being done.
Those are, those are Bill's recommendations from a 2011 report. So I'll let Bill talk.
The existing slope, as a result of the studies we've done, we know that it's stable. It's in a very good condition. And you can see from looking at the slope, there's no evidence of stress or instability. Our computer analysis of the stability of the slope bears that out. It's in good shape. The proposed design, again with a belt and suspenders mentality, when the new foundation goes in for the east wing, we're going to underpin it well down into that soil, down by the 22-degree slope line. And that's, of course, tied to the main building structure. So it's just going to be a lot sturdier than even the existing slope. And by virtue of excavating for the foundation, we're taking fill out off the slope. So actually, the addition is lighter than what's there today. That mass of soil, even though it's a smaller vertical distance, is much heavier than the structure that's going in its place. And the other piece is the revetment at the toe. The purpose for that is to keep the toe from eroding. And this site shows very little evidence of any erosion. And as we said, it's a very stable region. Several properties north of the beach property have very stable and robust beaches even at high water. That stone will make sure that the toes of the slope stays there. And many of the slope failure problems you see along the lakefront is due to the toe of the slope eroding from wave action. And then it gets steeper and steeper and it starts to slowly erode back on itself. So that's essentially to hold the toe in place, which is arguably the most important part of that slope.
Can I ask a dumb question? In addition to your very smart technical questions. During achieving, I'm not an engineer, but during achieving these elements, do you essentially kind of strip off the topography of that of that steep slope and then rebuild after the process is complete? Or what does that look like during the construction process?
The slope will stay with its current geometry. The root mat will stay essentially unchanged. So we're really working at the top of slope for the building and we've already completed the work down at the toe. I assume there'll be some landscaping in between.
Right. That, once again, is talking about this whole area above the projected 22-degree line. And that will be retained. We're in the midst of a landscaping project right now. We've met with the city foresters onsite. We're working basically towards the same ends as Forest Park did, as the city did at the beach. We're going to put in native ground covers and plants that typically have much more root structure below ground than the existing trees have above ground. The proposed plants will go down seven times as much underground as they show above ground. So it's all part of basically retaining the existing soil.
Is there an existing basement in the property throughout, through the whole length of the property?
Yes, there were existing basements under the entire house. One of the early plans you saw was the original basement plan. They weren't as deep as modern basements. They were more like English basements that are about five feet below grade.
And is, what's the condition of the existing, of the original foundation underneath the house throughout that basement area?
The existing foundation is great. It's, the whole house is built basically of non-combustible construction. The original owners, the Marks family, previously had a house in Lake Forest that burned. And the timeframe we're talking about, 1912, everybody had the Chicago Fire fresh in their mind. So the masonry walls are several courses thick. The concrete foundation is as thick as the masonry walls above. It's intact and solid as the day it was built.
So you don't think even with the age of the existing foundation, by time, excuse me, tying in the new foundation, you're going to cause any stress on the existing foundation, the original, or anything like that?
No, we don't anticipate that. And actually, as Bill said, we're going to be tying the new areas into the old areas and making it stronger.
Thank you.
Just to follow on that, do the new areas have basements as well?
Yes, the new areas have basements. And once again, as this section illustrates, the new basement will be slightly deeper than the existing basement here in order to catch that 22-degree line projected from the toe of the bluff.
Okay, thank you.
So the south piece that you're replacing over the original foundation, that had a basement originally?
Yes.
Can I pick up on that? In one of the photos you showed, the existing foundation looked like it was still visible through the aerial photo.
Yes.
So that basement is still there? It's just been covered up with dirt?
Right. I don't know if you noticed, but one of the early slides was the 1940s demolition and foundation plan. And what their note said was to basically knock the top foot, the top one foot of concrete off the foundation, push it in the middle and bury it all. So that, we anticipate finding that when we excavate. There's still rubble and everything inside the perimeter of the previous foundation.
And you'll remove that entire concrete foundation that's in there now?
Yes.
That will be removed as part of the scope of this?
Yes, and we'll be using the exterior dimensions as originally built as our parameters for where that happens.
Okay, so kind of taking off in a different direction here. Maybe I missed this as to why was the original part of that house that we're talking about rebuilding now removed? Was there an issue as to its construction problem? Or was there another reason that it was removed that we know of?
As far as we can tell, it was a fire. And the previous owners aren't around anymore, but there is a, actually an employee of a local contractor who worked there as a teenager. And he had direct, that's what I refer to in our statement of intent as second-hand knowledge. He talked to the people who owned it at the time. He was a handyman for them and he said that they did it because of a fire. You wouldn't think there could be much of a fire in the concrete construction that's there, but they decided it was time to make changes.
Do you, this is sort of a tangent question, but do you expect to find anything historic when you dig up the old foundation? Like what was there? What was?
All like door knob and everything.
Yeah, I bet. Interesting.
Archaeological digs.
How close is the east addition to the top of the...
Well, this dashed line is the existing grade now. So depending on what you're calling the slope.
Near to the bluff.
Yeah, well, the bluff is out here. The table land goes out and then it goes down to the historic concrete retaining wall that's there now. So it's not very close, but if you consider the bluff as the projected 22-degree lines, that's why we're dropping below the projected line.
From the table land, I think is what you're...
From the table, yeah.
What's the distance? Why don't you show the picture of the tree from the top down? It shows that the addition goes exactly where the current porch is.
Now, this aerial view more or less shows what you're asking. There's a fence basically to keep the kids on the table land, but there's a little bit of table land east of that as well. So that fence line is over here. This is the east wing we're talking about as it sits today. This garden wall is the east dimension and there are stakes there currently that defines where the original east wing sat. So basically, the garden wall is it and all this table land between the garden wall and the existing wrought iron fence and the edge of the bluff as defined by table land is right here.
Did you guess that's 20 feet, 30 feet?
I would guess that it's a good 30 feet.
So when it goes, when they go to excavate for that basement, is there going to be any issues we can keep close to the edge of the table wall? Would be overexposed? The foundation is, are they going to cheat it or?
No, yeah, we will have competent excavators. And nowadays, frequently, we're building right on property lines and lotline foundations, lotline footings are designed such that you can go right up to the line and not encroach on the property next door, which is how we're going to be treating this bluff.
Any other questions? All right, well, we'll have a chance to come back. Why don't we move on to any public testimony on this matter? Anybody intending to give any public testimony? Maybe? No. No cross-examination? Any final questions? Any final comments from staff? Board comment and discussion. Who would like to start?
You're looking at me?
Well, I'm just looking at, I'll go down here.
Just personal interest. This is going to be, when you redig the foundation on the south end of this, this is going to be like a time capsule in some ways. And given how this community feels about the original architects and old houses and history and so forth, it might be really interesting to try to make something out of that for the schools or for some sort of related historical study of what was there and what you find.
That's a great idea. What we've been doing with the Mark family for the last 10 years is we've been collecting a lot of the Marks things. We have all of their beds. We have their original wedding china. We have the clock that was in Mr. Mark's office and one of the paintings that was also in his office. And we're very close with the Marks families and their great-grandchildren. Whenever we dig up anything, okay, when we were kind of doing work in the attic, out of one of the walls fell a picture of one of the Marks daughters with her infant. And we had that framed and put into the house as well. So anything that comes out of that area, okay, one will try to use where... So anything that comes out of that area, okay, one, we'll try to use where it was, okay, in the house. But two, I love the idea of working with the school to help us figure out what we're doing if we come across anything about how it was used in the home.
Can I ask an additional question?
Sure.
Is there any plan to continue to monitor the bluff during construction to make sure that if nothing's connected to it?
Yes, naturally, to protect Ron's financial interests, we'll be monitoring everything and Bill and the engineers at AECOM will be onsite assisting us.
It seems to me, Mr. Chairman, that this, we need to rely on the assurance of the petitioner, his engineers, the staff and the city engineers as to the viability of this project, the integrity of it. Seems like they've done a thorough job, certainly in the presentation. And I assume there'll be follow-through as the project unfolds. But that said, I would, I would endorse recommending approval of a variance. Any comment down here?
I'm in agreement with the staff findings and what fellow board members have said so far, that this does seem to be a consistent use of variation for what, what it's intended. And I was curious to see if there's any significant structural reason why the original house was removed and it does not seem to be one. So in, in that case, it seems like this would be a good use of the variation for reconstruction of the historic property. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, if this was a vacant lot, I think we'd all be sitting here shrugging the shoulders saying, oh, well, it's too bad. But you got a Van Dorn Shaw with what appears to be a fantastic plan to kind of restore this back to its existing state. And you got a platoon of engineers and consultants that are in agreement with city staff. I mean, we could pretend to be engineers, but we're not. And it just seems like they've got belts and suspenders on for what they're going to do with the, with the steep slopes. So exciting project and I'd, I'd be inclined that we support it tonight. Very well done, very nice presentation. With that, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to recommend the approval of the variance as submitted based upon the findings by, by staff and the report we received and the materials that are in the packet submitted to us. So, and the testimony is given by the petitioner and their consultants today. So if.
And the, and the. Conditions. Approval there in staff's memo?
Yep.
That's the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project. And thank you for the model.
That stays here with us, right?
The next item on the agenda is consideration of a request for approval of an updated campus master plan for Lake Forest Academy located at 1500 Kennedy Road. The updated master plan will be considered as an amendment to the existing special use permit. The owner is Lake Forest Academy, the representative is Peter Whitmer, architect. Any, do you want, do you want, oh, yeah. Any declaration conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? Anybody intending to testify? Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best your knowledge? All right. Mr. Whitmer.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce Bill Dolby and he's going to do a general overview of the school and where it is and what its position is in the community.
My name is Bill Dolby. I'm the associate head of school at Lake Forest Academy. I'm here on behalf of John Strudwick, our head of school, who is, sorry, he couldn't be here tonight, but when the meeting was rescheduled, he had already committed to a meeting with some alumni in Seattle. We're, we're very happy to be here to seek approval of changes in our campus master plan. Lake Forest Academy has been part of Lake Forest since 1857, the girls' school since 1869. We've been on our current site for over 60 years since the 1940s. We're a school of 430 students, half of whom live on campus and 48 faculty families live on campus as well. I'm here with Andy Kerr, our chief operating officer, and Peter Whitmer will walk us through the proposed changes in the campus master plan.
I've been fortunate to be involved in the academy for about 18 years and I got involved right prior when they subdivided the property into the residential and, and the, the school. The, the whole property is about 162 acres. You can see, whoops, there we go. This is Route 60 here, north is, is over here. And I've sort of generalized it into different areas. There's some existing lakes, two lakes as you come in the property, and then there's a detention area up here to the east, which we've actually, in the last few years, have enlarged and enhanced its capabilities. And the, the water is about 25 acres. There's some wetlands, these shaded areas on the north are wetlands and that's about 6% or about 10 acres of the entire parcel. The open areas are in the shaded sort of orange color. That's about 43% of the site or about 70 acres. And these are just areas that bound, there's the train tracks that run along the east edge as you come in the entrance drive. And then the largest portion to the north, it buffers up to the Bears facility and some areas to the west, which is the Tap Pharmaceutical and the office complexes to the west. You can see the central campus is really obviously in the center. And we've always defined this campus as a campus of the thirds. The, breaking it down from the south, having the academic areas, the housing, and then the athletics. And not every piece fits in that, but that's the generalization. And the idea is that that, because it's a boarding school, that housing sort of straddles both athletics and academics. And the day students actually cross continually between the housing so that it have one community of students. The road circulation, we have one way in on Academy Drive and then a circulating path around the interior of the campus. And what we're trying to do with this in the long term is there's a main central axis that runs from Reed Hall, which is the original estate house, down to the athletics. And we'd like to keep that as pedestrian friendly as possible. It's, we try to limit traffic on that. And I think in our long-range plan, we're trying to continually lessen the, the trucks and, and cars on, on that central axis. Really what, I have these broken down into, the, the overall master plan is into different categories. This first one is what we call is a short-term master plan. And what we're looking and, and trying to fundraise for right now is a new student union. And in that student union is a dining facility with some student common space down below, which has some rec areas and some, the bookstore is down there with some club rooms too. And, and really, you can see by its location and its function, it's really the heart of the campus. It's really every student and faculty, they eat three meals there, really 12 months a year because the faculty stays on there. So it's, it's a, a building that's important, not, not only is, not really is a classroom space or living, but it, it's really the main dining room for everyone that lives there. And so we feel that its location, we've looked at many different options in terms of renovating some existing space, adding on to existing space. And I think that what we've come up with in terms of the central campus location makes the most sense. In the addition to that too, we've been able to sort of straighten up the southern, I'm sorry, the west road and that, and increase a little area of parking, which helps the service area of the new building. The next slide shows all the existing buildings and there's color coded, the grays are the existing buildings that we've done work to and are in pretty good shape. And then the purple buildings are ones that we, in the future, would need and require some major work. Reed Hall being the first one, while it has a new roof on it and really the new roof was the reason that they subdivided the property, they needed the, the funds to, to do that. And that's what precipitated that. But it, it is not sprinkled currently, so it needs to be sprinkled and electrical systems need to be updated in, in that space. The second one being New Hall and Hutch, that's the existing dining facility. That building is relatively original in its condition and needs renovation. And then the last one being major renovation is Warner Hall, which is in the east. It's a boys' dormitory. It's had some minor renovations over time, but really requires a fair amount of work in the future. The orange or mustard colored spots here are additions to the buildings that we've thought about. We don't have funding for any of these projects, so these are just, as I say, master plan ideas that we're, we've looked at. The first being a infill underneath the existing bridge to act really as a front door to the campus to help with security and get some additional flex space for the classroom areas. The second being elevator and toilet addition, basically to help with the handicap accessibility and, and the toilets in that area. An addition onto Atlas for additional faculty apartments to help with the ratios of students to faculty in that dormitory. The one here on the baseball field, we have the thought of an additional scoreboard at some point that they're looking at. On the football field, they're looking at the possibility of having guest bleachers on the east side, so doing those and then redoing the, the bleachers on the west side and the press box for that. I think that covers all the additions and renovations to existing facilities. The next would be long-term building locations. The one that we've probably studied the most is a field house that will be attached to the existing athletic facility. You can see that we have many configurations in terms of size and interior functions from indoor tracks to multiple basketball courts, tennis fields, or tennis courts, those sorts of things. The red indicates new buildings that aren't replacing existing structures and the orange replicates, replicates buildings that are replacement structures. So just continue on with the red. Faculty housing up to the north, North Cottage is what they call this up here to have some additional single-family faculty housing up here. Another faculty circle to the west, which is, would mimic what's there currently, some single-family housings for faculty there. And then these are orange, a girls' dormitory, which would take the place of the existing Marshall Field dormitory, so that would be demolished and this would be two smaller dorms, which would have a little better ratios from faculty to kids in those dorms. And then the last being a swing dormitory, which is, existing tennis courts are here, that we would look to provide a new dorm that would, that would go in that location. And this is the final slide, which sort of shows all this together with the additions of the existing fields. It shows the existing baseball field, existing football field. And then in the dark green, we show changes to the athletic fields. We think in the future that we could have a artificial turf, two soccer fields side by side, artificial turf on the east on the existing fields, a new soccer field up on the north end. And I think that, oh, and the tennis courts that we would have, the relocated tennis courts from where they are currently, and these would be between the parking area currently here and the football field. And then the grays just indicate new parking that would go with these facilities. So in the field house, it would have parking related around the field house and then a little bit of an expansion parking next to the tennis courts. And then if a new dormitory were built, a little expansion of, of parking in front of that dormitory. I think that covers pretty much the, the highlights of the master plan. As I say, we really don't have, you know, we project this out as a sort of five to 20 year period. But if, you know, if I look back at 20 years ago, what we started with here and the, the progress that we've made on the campus, it's, it's been really, I think, amazing, the transformation of what we used to have and where we are today. And I think, you know, this looking forward will keep Lake Forest Academy really on a national basis and really in the world is, is one of the top prep schools in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff's report. And Kathy, I might ask the same question that I asked on the last petition. I mean, I understand this is for an amendment to the special use permit, but you know, kind of lot going on here. Exactly what is the, kind of the ask tonight for the ZBA?
And I'm going to ask Mr. Whitmer if he would, do you know how to switch that to the back of the camera? I thought putting up the 2004 plan would be helpful. Yes, I'll, I'll give some background. Special use permits are required for all institutions in the city of Lake Forest. Most of Lake Forest is zoned for residential uses and the, the city traditionally has not adopted educational zoning districts or government zoning districts or institutional zoning districts, but has left the predominant residential pattern. And as a result, churches, private clubs, city buildings, the hospital, the college, public and private schools, all of those are approved through special uses. Special uses do a couple things. They allow for communication to the community about what's going on. They often establish some rules and regulations and they also give some certainty to the institution. We do encourage the various institutions to update master plans from time to time. And what we see is that the older master plans are, are much more vague in nature. Master plans in and of themselves are not detailed plans. They don't authorize any construction to begin, they don't issue permits. They're really an opportunity to look forward, to look at, to just share the discussions that are going on in the institutions. The last time Lake Forest Academy came forward with the master plan, it was in 2004, and this was the master plan presented at that time. We did encourage the academy to come forward to update their master plan, to show some changes that have occurred, but also to give us a sense of what they're thinking about in the future. The, the master plan as presented to you now does provide more detail. It breaks the overall campus into existing and, and future improvements. It identifies open space areas. For the first time, it identifies a landscape buffer in the area where homes in Academy Woods are immediately adjacent to the, to the campus. So it does, it does go beyond the, the, the previous master plan and gives us a better sense of what the academy is, is thinking about and is talking about. And like virtually every institution, the master plan, any project in it is subject to available funding. Approval of the master plan doesn't require these projects to be done. If conditions are approved as part of the master plan, then those conditions come into play. But there's no requirement for any of these individual pieces to move forward. Master plan also doesn't mean that if, if something changes dramatically in two years or in five years or in 10 years, the academy couldn't come back and say, the educational system has changed and we're doing X, Y, and Z now. But. But what it does do is it limits what can be done on the campus, and it sets expectations going forward. So with that, I think a couple of things, again, that I heard from neighboring residents. We tried to address those inner conditions. Lake Forest Academy is a bit of an unusual situation. When they located at this site in the 1940s, they were really isolated. They were out away from everyone. About 20 years ago, the academy did sell off some adjacent land to a developer, and the Academy Woods residential development was developed. Often, we have situations where, for instance, the college was here before the city, so neighborhoods developed around the college. Here we have much the same thing, that the academy was at this location and a neighborhood grew up around it. So there are inherently some conflicts. What we did hear from the neighboring property owners is that safety, security, privacy, traffic, and really respecting the boundaries between the campus and the residential neighborhood are really important. The conditions that are recommended as part of adoption, acceptance of this updated plan, try to speak to those neighborhood issues. Again, as I mentioned, this is the first time that the master plan actually calls out a landscape buffer. So it actually puts it on a plan, recognizes it, and there is a condition that speaks to the need to maintain plantings in this buffer, if something dies, to replace it, and to really focus on that landscape buffer if something, if some development is going to happen that's in close proximity to it. The conditions speak to continuing communications with, like, with Academy Woods Homeowners Association. If there's a significant project, I think the academy has in the past maintained those communications, and this would actually put this down as a condition of approval. The recommended conditions also identify when some conditions under which a new request for reconsideration of the master plan or the special use permit would be required. For instance, if the student capacity changed significantly. Today, there's 430 students. If the capacity of the school were to exceed 450 students, we're suggesting that that would be a time when the school would come in and talk to the city about what changes envisioned. Currently, there's about a 50-50 split of residential students and commuter students. If that were to drastically change, that could obviously drive the need for additional, significant additional need for residence halls. And the third element is if there's a significant change in how the rental uses occur on the campus. The campus has historically had offered Reed Hall for limited rental uses for weddings and corporate events, and also the hockey rink. For instance, the field house that's shown on here, when that project comes forward, if that project comes forward, understanding how that building is going to be used. It's one thing if it's going to be used primarily for student activities. It's a different situation if significant rental of that facility is in the plans that would also dictate how much parking is needed. The conditions speak to the city review process and reiterate that approval of the master plan doesn't approve any particular building. Once a building comes forward, once a new field comes forward, for instance, any rules and regulations in place at that time, for instance, if the county's watershed development ordinance were to change. Approval of the master plan doesn't guarantee that the regulations in place when this master plan are adopted would be used to approve the plans. And then finally, when Academy Woods residential development was approved, there was no provision made for secondary access. So the city, Conway Office Park, the academy, Academy Woods, all parties are aware that in an ideal situation, a secondary access would be provided. There have been conversations over the years. This is not something that the academy could do alone. It would actually require some cooperation, some involvement, some participation from adjoining properties both to the north, the Chicago Bears, and to the west, Conway Park. So that is not an issue that can be addressed simply by the academy. But we do recommend a condition that acknowledges that if and when the city is able to move those discussions forward, we would expect participation from the academy. And I will say that the secondary access certainly has been something the academy has expressed interest in and has made efforts to try and move that issue forward. So what we're looking for tonight is really a recommendation on this updated master plan. If you choose to move it forward with these conditions or with some modified conditions, that would then go to the city council for their consideration and for adoption, and that would become then the updated governing document for the long term of the campus. Thank you.
All right.
Just one question. So, make sure I understand this correctly. So the current master plan or the one we're being asked to approve, neither really allows specifically for any given project? That would all have to go through the city?
Correct. If it's a new building, for instance, a significant new building, building review board review would be required. There would be engineering plans that would be reviewed by the city engineer. And of course, there would need to be building plans that would need to be permitted.
So is this, this new master plan, is it a bit more restrictive? Just that if you are going to develop, there's some conditions in here that you have to follow, like the buffering and things like that?
The conditions do provide more guidance than is in the current plan. The plans themselves and the multiple sheets for the plan certainly provide more detail, more specificity than occurred in 2004. So I think it gives all parties a little bit better idea of what the academy is thinking or dreaming about over the long term.
Okay, already midstream. Questions from the board to the petitioner's staff?
I just have one question. That is, just to clarify what Jay was asking about for Reed. Did the city request that the academy update its master plan? Or did the academy come forward and say, "It's 10 years old, we'd like to update it," just to give you guys a sense of what we're thinking?
I think it was a joint decision. Certainly, it's something the city has mentioned over time. I think we always have those conversations when plans get to be eight or 10 years old. So we had raised it, but the academy on its own came forward.
Thank you.
One question. What happens if two years from now, they decide they want to, they want to go forward with a project that is not on this current plan? Can they just submit plans for permit and go forward with it? Or does it have to come in front of this body or another body for who?
If the academy decided, and let me, I'm trying to think of something, that they wanted to build a seven-story science tower or science building, that's not reflected on this plan, they would need to come in and modify this plan. I will say that the plan, the footprints of the building shown on the plan, for instance, if the field house were to come forward and there were to be funding in five years or 10 years, and that field house is in this generally, general location and generally of the same proportion, this isn't meant to dictate exactly. But yes, if there's a building that is not at all shown on here, or if it's a use that's different, they would need to come back through this process.
Kathy, you have the 2004 plan up on the screen there. Could you just walk through and identify any aspect of that plan that's actually been implemented since its authorship?
I would actually defer to Mr. Whitmer.
This is, look here, this is the Academy Woods, the front drive here, Reed Hall. This wasn't built. This is a performing arts center, building that we built. This was Atlas Dormitory, which we built. This, they have a new dormitory that we haven't built yet. That's a tennis court. We're sort of proposing in the same location. They had a new athletic facility in general. We renovated and added on to our existing, so sort of have to do that. On this side, they propose to have a new student union, pretty much in the same location. Actually, they'll tear down one building and put it there, but we're pretty much in the same location. We built a new dormitory, Ferry Hall here. They had a couple of buildings torn down here. We took an existing, the armory, and relocated that building back here. And then we have some faculty housing that's back in this location.
So, excuse me, Pete?
They had a library here, which we, libraries have changed a lot since.
Peter, would you just mind going down numbers one through 12 here and telling me what was done, what wasn't done?
And Peter, would you speak into the microphone or just pull it over to you?
I mean, some of them are self-evident, but.
Potential area for campus expansion. And I'm sorry, I'm just not, I have to read it and understand it myself. Okay, so number one was a library down here in this location. And that is not, that's changed. We didn't do it.
That's not done, and it's not on the new proposed master plan. Okay, thank you.
Two was a new parking area here. Again, that's not done, really not on our radar anymore either. Three is a new student center dining facility. And that's really the project that we're looking at as high.
Essentially in the same location.
Pretty much. It's a little further south. Ours is a little further north.
Right, next.
Four, potential area for campus expansion is four, is a new building here. And this is actually where Marshall Field, Field Gold Dorm is. And so they're just showing that as a building, and we're having that as a new dormitory.
So that's common to both plans?
Correct.
But not constructed?
Not constructed.
Okay.
Five, removal of Field House. Okay, that's, this is removal of Field House, and we're saying the same thing on number five.
So wait, has it been removed?
Has not been removed.
That's what I thought, okay.
We're still using it. Then number six is removal of Duran Cottage, which is right in here. And we've actually kept that building when we built Ferry Hall.
So it's going to stay there?
We have it, it is staying now.
All right.
Number nine.
Eight.
Eight, removal of Duran House.
Well, seven, eight, seven, actually.
New dormitory and housing facility. That's virtually in the same location as what we built for Ferry Hall, which is a new, so number seven we've completed.
So that's done?
Yeah. All great, okay.
Excuse me, what is Ferry Hall? You said you built Ferry Hall.
We built Ferry Hall. That's in this location right here.
That's a dorm.
It's a girls dormitory.
A girls dorm.
Okay.
And then, let's see, number eight is removal of Duran House. That we didn't remove, that's the one we, it was actually a very interesting project. We picked it up, it's about 100 feet long.
That's l'oragéry, right?
Armory, and we moved it to the north. Yeah, so we renovated, and now that has faculty housing in it, apartments.
And that was moved?
Right.
But that's done?
That's completed. Nine is a new dormitory and faculty housing. They're showing another dorm here, which we're not contemplating on doing.
So that's out?
Yes. And then number 11, there's a little single-family house that's right here that they're proposing to be removed, remove Richard's Cottage. And we're proposing when we do the Field House, the same thing, that that will be removed.
So it's going to, it's on both plans?
It's on both plans. And then number 12, new faculty housing, which is shown here. And I would say that we built half of that, and we're proposing the second half. So there are a lot of similarities between this plan and what we're doing, and there's implemented a fair amount of them.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding the faculty housing on that point. Previously, you noted that, or the petitioner noted that they, even in 2004, had expanded some of the housing to include this, doubling the footprint here, number 12, on the previous plan, and then this one. And in your plan, you also proposed to add in five new units where there are existing two units up at the north. It's number eight on your plan. What I'm trying to reconcile is the fact that you're going to add a significant number of additional faculty housing, but we're not changing the student body. Does this mean that we're going to be decreasing the ratios or increasing the ratios of the student faculty? Or is this the step to expansion?
Really, what the goal is to the academy is to have 100% of the faculty live on campus. And so, and we don't have the housing to do that now. I think it's 80%.
About 75%.
About 75%. Teaching faculty live on campus. And one of the things that we do, too, is that there's some existing faculty units that are really subpar, that are stuck, like in New Hall, there's two apartments upstairs. And we really need to upgrade those. And the more that we can provide a quality living environment for faculty in terms of hiring faculty, quality faculty, and having them come there. So I wouldn't say that we're expanding the number of faculty on campus. It's that they're off campus, and now they're come on campus, and then also attracting new faculty to the academy. So the overall number of teachers ratios, really, it's about 13 to one is typically what we are at. And that stays consistent. It's just that there aren't as many teachers driving to school every day. They're actually living on campus.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Is one of your objectives to increase the student population over time? Or is it, is it pretty much where it is? And so all this is sort of a dynamic plan to increase the quality of the campus and the environment? And it's not to drive additional students to come to?
No, I mean, really what it is, is everything, every project that we're proposing is just an enhancement to the existing student body. Well, it goes from, you know, 430 to 450, that's not that, you know, 20 more students. But I think beyond that, one of the things is if we were to significantly increase the student body, we don't have the facilities for it. We don't have enough classroom, you know, we're pretty much maxed out on our classroom space at that 13 to one ratio. So we would need to build like a new faculty or a new classroom building.
Right, and I noticed in the plan, there really isn't a call for much additional classroom at all.
Really, our first project is to get the dining room out of the basement. If you've ever been to the dining room, it's really subpar to all the rest. It's amazing, you know, and have a student, sort of student activity space that they don't really currently have. So it really is just in, keep the quality level of education up. And, you know, the athletics, the Field House is really about building it for the students that are there, not for any kind of rental things. Rental is just a supplemental income to it, but our main goal is educate kids.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have an additional question, perhaps even for staff and, or maybe for us internally here, is the use of the approval that comes from this. I'm trying to get my head around, when we make a recommendation of this, either for or against, that goes towards city council, they obviously would take into account our recommendation. But from that going forward, where perhaps is the use of this recommendation going to be put forth? Is that when they come forward with building plans that, for the new student union, for example, if that's the next item on the agenda, then it's like, they're going to reference, "Well, as shown on the master plan, as approved by this body on such and such a date." Is that sort of the path that these things take?
Yes, and I think you'll see with the 2004 plan, it was pretty vague. Sometimes it was a little difficult to assess whether something was consistent or not consistent. So this plan is going to help us much more. If a new building is proposed, we will absolutely go to this plan and see if it's generally consistent, the purpose it's being constructed, the location. So that's exactly how we will use this plan.
So, and can I answer that question? None of the city processes or approvals would be short-circuited by the updating of the special use permit? I mean, the way, the way I kind of see this is that this is kind of a first stage gate for, is the academy heading in the right direction for some of the bigger picture issues? Almost like a planning commission issue, but because it's a special use permit, it's in front of us. I mean, if any new building was actually going to move ahead and they got funding, they'd have they'd have to go in front of the same boards and commissions that I think any other new building would have to, isn't that right, Kathy?
Correct. What, what it eliminates is the need every time the, the school does a project, going through this process. Same thing with the college. That's why there's an advantage to putting something on paper, some of it is pie in the sky, but, but at least we have something that then says, yes, it's, it's consistent with what's shown on the plan, we can move right to looking at the architecture and review of the, the engineering and building plan.
Yeah, and, I mean, it's also an, an opportunity to, to address any additional issues that this board might see, that we might hear in a few minutes, that ought to be incorporated into that master plan revision, so, anyway.
I have another question.
Do you have an order of, or a schedule for, let's say, the first five things you want
to have done? If you had the funding, what's the, you mentioned the cafeteria.
You know, it's interesting, because when we started the performing arts building, we were actually trying to build a fieldhouse. And then we had a donor come forward and said, we'd really like to have a performing arts building. So, you know, I think there's been an order in terms of how the school sees it, and I think it's come to the front, that the student union is, is our top priority right now, it's the lowest, you know, so I think that one, we're pretty comfortable, and that's what we'd like to see forward. But if tomorrow somebody comes and says, hey, you know, I'd really like to give you money for a fieldhouse, we'll change that priority pretty quick. So it could be, you know, could switch that way. I would say that the, I would, to give priorities, one would be the student union, absolutely. Next would be, faculty housing is always going to be a priority to keep the quality of, of housing up for that, so we'll try to do that over time. The fieldhouse is probably the second large sort of priority, and then third would become new dorms. Oh, and the athletic, the turf, artificial turf is, is pretty high.
Okay, we'll have a chance to come back. Why don't we move now to a public testimony? Anybody liking to, yes ma'am? If you could please state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Joanne Desmond. My husband Terry and I live at sixteen eighty-one Yale Court, on the grounds of Academy Woods subdivision, and I am the president of the association, Academy Woods Homeowners Association. And I, there in your packet is a letter from our association that is a response to the proposed Lake Forest Academy master plan, and we do appreciate and support the efforts of Lake Forest Academy to develop a world-class private academy, and the seventy-seven residences that comprise the Academy Woods community desire for a continued collaborative relationship with its adjacent neighbors, Lake Forest Academy. Because the Lake Forest Academy master plan submitted today is essentially a wish, wish list, expanding, as we've been told, approximately twenty-five to fifty years, it is by its design lacking in specific detail. Consequently, it is of the utmost importance to our residents that any specific future construction plans at Lake Forest Academy take into consideration any potentially adverse effects on residential properties, including traffic, stormwater engineering, privacy, public safety, and security of our homeowners, as Kathy had previously mentioned. We strongly endorse the recommendations of the staff, and especially that which requires prior notice to Academy Woods, and the submission to us by Lake Forest Academy of the same plans as submitted to the city, in order for us to better determine how it may impact on our properties. Furthermore, as trees and vegetation have died out over the twenty-year history of our development, the Academy Woods Homeowners Association is seeking your support in requiring Lake Forest Academy to ensure and maintain a dense landscape barrier between the campus functions and the adjacent homeowners, as recommended by staff. In addition, with only a single access road entrance and exit into Lake Forest Academy and Academy Woods subdivision, the significant increase in traffic generated from the increased rental usage of Lake Forest Academy facilities poses a public safety concern for our residents, and this rental usage is not directly related to the educational mission of the school. We request that beyond the existing rental uses of Reed Hall and the ice rink, that no additional rentals that increase traffic and risk public safety be permitted on campus. And finally, the Academy Woods Homeowners Association would like to express our most sincere appreciation to Kathy Cerniak, who spent several hours of her very busy time listening to the concerns of our homeowners, and keeping us apprised of all issues important to our homeowners association. Thank you very much on behalf of the Academy Woods Homeowners Association for your consideration of our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other public testimony? All righty. Is everybody okay? Do we need a break? Anybody need a break here? You okay? I'm good, all right. Final, any final questions?
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. Regarding the, the fieldhouse that's shown on this master plan, it seems to rather significantly increase the number of parking spaces that would be on campus here, and I'm trying to understand, given the fact that it's, the representation at this point is that the, the number of students and faculty are essentially going to stay the same, that, what the, what the rationale would be for that, and I don't know if that's something that either the petitioner or staff has some insight into, so that we can understand what, what's, what's the use here.
Staff also noticed the, the increase in parking, and I think one of the conditions we're recommending is that, at the time that fieldhouse is proposed, we would need to understand the intended use and really correlate the parking. Certainly there are times right now that the parking on campus isn't adequate, I think we don't want to build parking for single, a few single large events, so, so that is something that the condition tries to address, saying that as that process, project comes forward, we'll need to work with the academy, understand how many parking spaces really are needed, and understand the intended use of that building.
Okay. In, in addition to that, one of the things that staff had noted, and it actually came up in part of the presentation, was the, the multiple use, or the multiple access points that might be available. I think that it was referenced that they would require partners of adjacent property owners to provide that secondary egress from the site, presumably that would be the issue if the primary access point was somehow blocked in a way. And I don't see any reference to that at all on this plan, and, and I wondered if that's been at least even considered. I've seen on other sorts of master plans that even if they don't necessarily have their, the, the endorsement of the adjacent owner, you referred to the Bears facility, for example, that there's a physical way that it might be able to be done, but it would, that would necessitate cooperation, but I don't see any reference to that being addressed in here, or am I missing that?
We, we could certainly add an, an arrow that indicates the potential for access. There, there are, certainly a lot more study would need to be done, there are wetlands on the site, as I said, there are intervening properties, but I, I think that that's something that would be reasonable to, to just indicate that a, a couple different directions where potential secondary access, again, and at least acknowledges that it's an issue without making it any commitments. So we could certainly add that to the plan if everyone's comfortable with that.
And another thing that was identified here is that, that traffic and the, the, either the volume of traffic or the speed of the traffic is, is a concern to some people, and I don't know if that's at all able to be addressed directly on a plan, but perhaps has that, i- is that, I didn't hear that in the presentation, but is there a, a plan in place, call it a master plan, to address overall traffic issues that seem to be a concern?
Kevin, we could, we could, if it goes that far tonight, we could certainly incorporate that into our conditions of, it's a very good point, but, I mean...
Was that road, is that road controlled by the academy, or is that a public roadway?
The road is a private road. It is owned by Lake Forest Academy, and there are some...
Students, the road is actually owned both by, I'm Andy Kerr, I'm...
Andy, would you come up?
If you could step up to the mic and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Andy Kerr, I'm the chief administrative officer at the school. The road is actually owned both by Academy Woods Homeowners Association, with a perpetual easement granted to the school, and by the school with a perpetual easement granted to Academy Woods Homeowners Association. There is an S-drive, if you go back, if we can go back to the original long shot that you had up, Peter. The S-drive portion that goes through the Academy Woods area is owned by Academy Woods with the, with the easement granted to the school, and then the remainder of Academy Drive is owned by the school with an easement. So if you take a look, it's that portion that goes right through here. That portion right there is actually owned by Academy Woods, and then the remainder of the road is owned by the school.
And who sets the traffic speeds and so forth on a road like that, currently?
They're, they're currently posted in the S-curve itself, it's twenty miles an hour, the rest of the road, I believe it's posted at thirty miles an hour. We maintain the road in its entirety, we, the academy. We maintain the, maintenance of it, as well as the snow shoveling and things of that nature. There's a, when we last did a traffic check, we were about seventy-five percent of the usage, and Academy Woods was about twenty-five percent. We agreed to a change in our reciprocal easement agreement in two thousand and ten, that the school would bear eighty-five percent of the cost of the road, and any replacement to that, and Academy Woods would bear fifteen percent in their cost of the road.
It's a one-lane road each way, isn't it?
Pardon me? Yes, one lane each way.
I have a question for you. Do you feel, you mentioned that you're concerned with the traffic and the speeding and so forth, are you concerned about it now, or are you concerned about it, even now you're concerned about it?
Yes, my husband and I have lived there nineteen years, and the traffic has significantly increased, and it's not related to the student population, insofar as the coming and going of students, the fifty percent that attend school there. It's specifically related to the rental usage of facilities on the Lake Forest Academy campus. So that's, that's the concern, and the concern is, if additional facilities were built and those facilities were rented, what we have now is a very, very dangerous, we believe, situation with traffic, especially if there were an emergency and we were not able to find a way to get in or out of our communities, as well as for students. We believe this is a serious concern, a single access, but to put more traffic in there for additional facility rentals would just, in fact, create a, a further public safety concern, and that's why it was brought up.
Is the problem now the volume of the traffic that's on the road at certain times of the day, where you feel like you can't?
The volume of the traffic is...
Traffic, or...
Well, that, that, of course, and that, that's difficult to control as much, but I know that we've worked with the academy, and so far as speeders, we've tried to do that. I, it is primarily the volume of the traffic, with more people coming in to the community through rental, and the possibility of that road being blocked, we were, we're just talking about the exacerbation of a potential problem, and, and additional traffic and security and safety that results from that, that increased usage. That's the point that we were bringing up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Is that an enforcement issue on the, for example, the speed of the road? Who maintains enforcement of that? Is that really an issue that, that, I mean, how, can we...
A good question.
Yeah.
Who, who does enforce the...
The Lake Forest Police Department is welcome on our grounds twenty-four hours a day, and they do come on, and they do enforce, but given the number of miles of roads in Lake Forest, we get a proportion of their time.
So I guess, I would guess that issue is both speed and volume, you know, on that road. Having driven that road a few times, it's hard to, it's hard to drive twenty miles an hour, sailing down to try and get down to one of those housing units, so, you know.
Do you, do you, do you know where the, do you have a target location for a secondary access, if it were ever to be built? I presume it would come out onto Field Drive somewhere in the corporate park?
We have, as far as a, a couple of items. One on the traffic volume, in the twenty years since Academy Woods has been there, the school has grown from about two-hundred and fifty students to four-hundred and thirty that we have today. That also means we've grown the number of faculty, and because of the constraints on housing on campus, it means we've grown the number of faculty and staff who live off-campus and have to commute, so that has certainly added to the traffic. We have been in, in discussions over the years with the Chicago Bears on a possible way of going out that north area, out here at the northwest corner of the property, however we cut across wetlands, and we would be then having to work with the Bears to get an easement, and to tie into Football Drive at the far end of Conway Park. The other that would, in our mind, make some sense, however, we're only one of the property owners, would be to go across, near, where we could go across following the North Shore Sanitary District easement, and that would take us next to where the Abbott Building is on Conway Park, but we have not had any discussions with Abbott.
Lloyd, do you have a question?
And that would also be in the proximity of the parking for the new fieldhouse.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not, I guess I'm a little fuzzy on this, is, is, if the fieldhouse is built, is there an intention to rent it or not?
It would be primarily for campus use, but we would also look for rental opportunities.
All right, I'd like to push this a little harder on the question Kevin asked about the parking associated here. It, it does look like, I'm going to guess, close to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty additional parking spaces proposed there, and I understand, Kathy, that the city is incorporating something in the recommendations to maybe right-size the parking in association with the actual proposal of an improvement like a fieldhouse and all that. But nevertheless, it's being incorporated into the master plan, and as such, you know, establishes a fair amount of room for as many as a hundred and fifty or sixty, how many, does anybody know how many are in there? Two hundred, is it?
It's in the top fifty.
I mean, on the right side, those are, those are twenty each, so that's a hundred right there.
You know, one of the things that's, is very difficult to do is, we don't even know what size the fieldhouse is going to be now, in terms of the, you know, we've talked about like two different sizes, so that capacity would, would change too, in terms of the size of the fieldhouse. Let me pull up the, just...
Certainly the, the indication of a parking area could be vaguer, so that there isn't the assumption with the number of spaces. I think the idea is that there would be some parking associated, number yet to be determined.
I think that might be worth thinking about.
I think that would be better to do, because we're going to have to, and I think we could define the rental of that better too. I mean, it's, the primary use is for our students.
That's what I heard.
You know, but the, we could define the rental when that, you know, when we get closer.
Not to, not to turn, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just thinking that, I've already heard it said this evening, that a lot of the increase in traffic has to do with the rental of the facilities on the campus. And here we're talking about a rather substantial potential addition to that.
You know, I would think that when we get there, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how that conclusion is brought about, but I think it probably makes sense to have a parking study done at that point when we do the fieldhouse, to really do it scientifically, unless it's kind of watching. You know, to me, that would make sense. Because we would need a parking study to understand how many parking spaces we're going to acquire, what the traffic counts are on the roads at that time too. You know, I think that would be a more beneficial, where the fieldhouse would go.
He was picking up something that I was thinking of going, probably into the recommendation. I mean, the primary concern, if I'm hearing right, is traffic. And, you know, parking goes along with the traffic. I mean, I don't want to, it almost seems like you would want to suggest a traffic/parking study as part of this, because that goes hand-in-hand with a lot of these, you know, this new structure that's being proposed.
I have a question.
Follow-up question. Are you done, like?
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
I just, a question of staff, actually, and that is, is there any sort of requirement or statute or anything like that that says if a certain number of people live or commute to and from campus like this, that a second entrance is actually required at some point, or no?
No. There is no specific requirement. Normally that is discussed and required as part of new development. So it was determined to be an insurmountable issue when Academy Woods was approved, and therefore a secondary access was not required, but the development was approved. So it is, it's a unique condition here, given the adjacent uses and the wetlands. But again, it is something that continues to be discussed at various levels and with the various parties.
Okay. Any other questions? There are many questions, but any other questions right now?
Mr. Chairman, a question of you perhaps is, are we going to have a little bit more time to consider this before we...
Well, yeah, when we head into kind of our comments, you know, discussion now, that's, because that's a good question. If we're there, if we can, a couple of thoughts. First, I think it's a good thing that the academy and the city have kind of gotten together and kind of tried to evolve this master plan. That's a good thing, to be proactive. The second thought is, there's a lot to bite off here tonight. And, you know, kind of hard to, in my mind, kind of hard to wrap all of this up tonight. I think we brought up some good questions. I wish, and you pointed this out a little bit earlier, show me what happened and what didn't happen to the previous master plan. I almost wish there was a previous master plan state, current state, where we're going state. That would probably be very helpful for this board to show what your plans were, where you are now, where you're going, don't you think? That would be helpful for me.
Clear it up, for sure.
Another theme that I think is coming out of this is, Academy Woods is telling you, I think, that their primary concern is traffic, and along with that is parking. Probably would be appropriate to, you know, address that in some sort, either to dial it back to, I think somebody suggested maybe we'd be a little bit more vague as to how many specific spaces there are for the new fieldhouse. But at least to be mindful of that in the ongoing process, and certainly as a point of recommendation, if we're going to get there, and hopefully we will. Any other wishlist items from the board?
Maybe just a little bit more consideration of the secondary access opportunity, particularly the one that might run along the sanitary easement.
And the wetlands, you know.
Right, because in that vein, I'm thinking that, let's say the fieldhouse gets built and you, becomes a spectator venue, and you have a basketball game there, and there's 500 people that show up for the basketball game, and they all have to get in and get out.
I mean, my sense of that, Rich, is almost as though no-go unless there is a secondary access, you know.
I think there needs to be some kind of trigger mechanism, so they do this, then the secondary easement.
And how would that, and how would that happen? You know, how would that theoretically happen?
And so it's probably... behoove men of you to be talking, forward-thinking with both Abbott and the Bears, or whoever those guys are that can provide that secondary access to you, so that you don't decide you want to build the fieldhouse one day, and you're not close enough to get the secondary access that you might need to support that fieldhouse. So you're not, so your plan isn't stopped because you don't have the access. And those sorts of discussions regarding access and roads and things, as I'm sure you know, can take some time.
Richard, I don't know that necessarily I would insist upon their having discussion with those other partners, although I think that that would be helpful. I think what would be good is that we have a better sense of what the possibilities are that they're considering, that are open to them, that that might be helpful. I don't have a fundamental objection to them laying out that there's 250 parking spaces that are going to go around over here as a possibility. If that's what their plan is and on their wishlist, then I think we ought to know that. But as far as it relates to master planning, I think it would be helpful to understand, okay, what does that really entail, and what's that going to trigger? And that's what I think we would want to be considering.
Because these are, these tend to be living documents. They evolve over time. I mean, what they did back in 2004, that didn't turn out, and that's okay, you know, that's their plan, and it changed.
Right.
In that vein, Bob, I think one of the recommendations we should make is that this document be updated every about three years, whether they build anything within a three-year period or not.
How often, I, let me, let me...
Right now, right?
What is the typical protocol for that, Kathy?
It really depends on the type of development done. If there isn't funding and nothing changes, to require an update in three years is time and money. I think certainly as, as plans for the campus change or as things get built, normally we see about 10 years. I think right now the college is probably beyond 10 years, so it's, it does take a lot of planning effort, and so I, my sense is three years is probably too limited, and we normally haven't set a specific timeframe, but let that kind of evolve from what occurs.
Yeah, maybe we would, we would, you know, make some sort of a soft recommendation that is, at the five-year point, if plans have significantly changed, to encourage the academy to approach the city, something like that, as opposed to a, you know, hard recommendation. But obviously, you know, again, these are living documents, they change, and as they change significantly, probably ought to be updated, yeah. So I think we got some good stuff. But I think obviously there's just so much to consider and some good direction given. We probably ought to continue this tonight, allow the, allow the academy and their consultants to do their good work, and to come back to us at a later date, and we'll be closer to that five, five-yard goal line, no pun intended, and get it over the hurdle next time. So any other comments before I invite a motion to continue? I think we've given, I think we've given some clear direction, and...
I think I would just offer that the academy should be commended for coming forward with this update after 10 years, and given some of the substantial changes in your vision now. You step forward to us, and I think we're appreciative of that.
Yep. I perhaps add that I think we would want, I would want to encourage that the academy continue to be a positive for our community, in that we would want to support what, both what we can do for it and what it can do for us as to, as a partner, and I think that that's part of what this process is about, and that I'd like to encourage that we work towards doing that as it relates to putting some plans together that would both be helpful to the community and to the academy.
Good stuff. Do I have a motion to continue? This could be complicated. Somebody like the...
Someone continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a comment?
I would just incorporate a summary of the points that we would like to have the petitioner come back and address.
Yeah.
Kathy, have you been able to pick those up, or, okay?
In the meeting minutes.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Kevin made a motion, somebody, alright, all's in favor? Aye. All's opposed? Matter's continued. Thank you very much, and I'm sorry, this matter's off the agenda. We're going to, we have one more agenda item. Now is the opportunity for the public to address the zoning board of appeals on matters not on the agenda, or any agenda, or any items that they might like to throw in. Could you please step up to the... If you could give us your name and name and address.
My name is Terry Desmond, 1681 Yale Court. We've lived there almost 20 years. And I want you to understand before leaving, that everyone in our development thoroughly loves living where we are. Number two, we appreciate what has been done at that academy, thanks to people like Andy Kerr and the headmaster, John Stredwick, in the last seven years. If you have not been back into that area, and very few people do venture back, I think you'll understand what a terrific institution the academy is. We've had a very good harmonious relationship. I want you to understand that. It's not an antagonistic feeling at all, and we feel privileged to live there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That's a good last word. Any other items for the public to address with the ZBA, not on the agenda? Hearing none. Do I have, Kathy, any other, anything else?
See you next year.
See you next year. Happy holidays. It's in January, date to be determined. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. All's opposed? Meeting adjourned.[1608.41]